But some.
She the train.
They're not out then.
I think they're close to now.
She was not. It's out into out then. They're glad. Whatever. And it's three.
More than. I'm very she is. That is the law. I'll steal this one. No, it's just with computer. So you're eating. But you're honest. Something like. But is that very, very fucking. That we hate. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah. She sent me an email. I said, right there she could.
It didn't respond back to me. So I was just making sure.
Oh, I didn't respond at all.
She knew.
Good looking cat got bring.
Yeah, it is. Change it up today. I had a good weekend.
Did Bo get to play the other night?
No, he didn't play. He suited up.
Yeah.
I thought he was gonna get two. It was twenty eight nothing. I was like, you know what?
Yeah.
They came back and tied it with two seconds left.
Yeah, wow.
College is a little bit different than high school. A little bit different.
It's different in a lot of ways.
I think we'll get to play Saturday, though. This Saturday.
Are they playing?
They play Texas Southern. It's like the the game they gotta pay to have a little tennis. I think you might get in there this week. Hopefully Friday doesn't go like it did last year.
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah, they need to need to pay back this Friday night.
Ultimately, ain't got the commerce officials. I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be there.
I was watching. I was hitting Friday. I was keeping up and doing all right. You know, I got that little app, you know, as of scores.
Yeah.
And I saw where Gilmore Gilmore embarrassed with clothes. I'm like, man, it's supposed to. I started never little chat boxes. Rocking about the officials on and on and on and on. And so when I got home, I you know, everything's on YouTube now. Looked at Gilmore Harris, the same officials. You know, it's like it was the exact same group.
You notice they their game shortened that.
Yeah. Well, it was. It was lightning pretty bad in the east of us.
We, you know, I live there Friday night. Just got our game done down toward the lightning shit.
For the afternoon, Brian here. Months there, thirty seconds. All right, it's nine o'clock. Get the meeting started. We're gonna have an opening prayer led by David Garborough from the Bridge Fellowship and Martin Smell.
Yes, that's great. Thank you. Well, the rain today, God, we pray at this time under your feet according to your sovereign God over everything. We pray that you do just as I do, everything that happens here today. I would just pray for Judge Reese and all of our lucky officials, God, that as they serve our county, we're giving wisdom to sermon. God, we pray for everybody who's fallen with needs, if their needs be heard. God, we pray that all of us will understand being a part of the community means we don't get what we want, but that we're really what we're needed in the community. We pray that your wisdom, your sermon, which is flow through this room today, your blessings be over, Jesus, same we pray.
Amen. Thank you. All right, bless the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. May I have a seat? We have a there's a lot of agenda today. And first call a meeting to order at nine oh one AM on September the thirteenth. And we have a quorum and Commissioner LePrat is visiting us via Zoom as he is in Oklahoma City. No, you're in Georgia somewhere, right?
Alabama.
Alabama. Okay. So very good. All right. Are there any general announcements?
My Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Billie Jean Cole from the Vansant County Sarah Norman Library. In front of you, I put this flyer. We are honoring Sarah Norman's ninety fifth birthday in October. On October fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and thirtieth sixth. In her honor, we will be having snacks and handouts to everybody who comes here. And we ask that you donate a book in Sarah's honor. Either a children's book or an adult's book. We would like to have ninety five books on our display to take pictures, so to show us the patrons that love her and are so happy that she bought the first one, and then make them. And we are very, very honored to have her as our mentor, and that's who our library is aiming for because she is such a great person. So we hope you'll all come by and see us at some point in time. It's not a come and stay. Sarah won't be there at her age. We have trouble getting her out without. So we're just gonna do anything for her at library, and then we'll take her poster that you can sign and pictures that we'll be taking of you and your book. We'll take them and then her. So that she can see them. So we hope that all of us, all of those things, all of Thursday and October. We open at eleven on those days, the eleventh and sixth.
Okay, are there any other general announcements? All right, if not, are there any public comments that have been submitted? I guess not. Where's Travis? There's somebody here representing the county clerk's office taking minutes.
We're making notes for.
You're taking notes. Okay, very good. All right, no public con- comments. Item number four, consent agenda. These are items considered routine by Commissioner Corum being enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. And we have six items on here. Is there any discussion or any need to discuss and move any of the individual items out? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Show me. Second person.
All right, motion made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Next time. All right. Item number five, public hearing on proposed tax rate. And so at this time, I will close or we will open a public hearing at nine oh. How many?
No.
Nine oh five. Okay, nine oh six. All right. So is there any comments or questions in this public hearing about the proposed tax rate? If there is no discussion. The proposed tax rate is point four zero five eight six nine six zero. The known revenue tax rate is point three eight six eight eight nine eight nine, and the voter approval tax rate is point four zero five eight six nine six eight. Okay, so and no discussion, then I will close the public hearing at nine oh seven AM. All right. So next item, that's the public hearing. Discuss item number six, discuss and consider adoption of the Vansant County budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, beginning October first twenty twenty three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So is is there the budget has been posted online and the updated budget has. Is there any discussion? Or is there is there a motion to adopt the county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four?
Motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Barton. Is there a second?
Second Milton.
Second by Commissioner Milton. I believe we need to get individual votes. I vote for.
We're not gonna have any discussion.
Oh, yes, discussion.
I'd like to make a comment that we've worked. This court worked very hard on this budget, and it is this court's budget. It's not Brandon's or or the judges or my budget. It's our budget. We worked on it. We don't. We don't ever individually get everything that we would prefer, but it's still our budget. I believe personally that we could have tightened our belts a little bit more. We brought in one point one million. We're bringing in one point one million dollars in tax revenue than we did the year before. We're getting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars grant hopefully from the state of Texas, and this court spent every dime of it. We've got to tighten our belts. We've got to do a better job. We're all conservatives, and we need to act like.
Any further discussion? All right. We haven't taken voice vote on individual. Commissioner LePrat? You're you're muted.
Muted.
Okay. Four. All right. Commissioner Melton?
Four.
All right, Commissioner Pearson?
Four.
Commissioner Barton?
Four.
And I vote for two, so it's unanimous. All right. So item number seven, discuss, consider adoption of the twenty twenty three tax rate for Vansant County in the order setting the tax rate. And we had the public hearing on proposed tax rate, and now we are going to officially adopt it. Is there a motion to adopt the tax rate of four? One moment, please. Point four zero five eight six nine six zero for the next fiscal year.
Show me a person.
All right, is there a second?
Seven.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there any discussion? All right, no discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like sign. And it does not require a voice vote. Okay, item number eight, discuss, consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. I'm gonna go back actually to seven. So everyone approved. Is that correct? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, discuss back to number eight, discuss and consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in fiscal year twenty twenty four. The tax increase was basically four point nine one percent over the tax the revenue generated from fiscal twenty twenty three. So is there a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in twenty twenty three?
Don't move Milton.
No, it's like twenty twenty four budget. All right, motion is made. Is there a second?
Second person.
All right, motion made. Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider the number nine, I'm sorry, discuss and consider the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget policy. Okay, the budget policy was in the binder. Is there any? Is there a motion to accept the policy?
Motion to accept as planned.
All right, is there a second? All right, motion has been made. Second, and is there any further discussion? These are policies related to how our money is used or how we transfer money and allocate money within the budget for the fiscal year. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All is opposed like sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. That was item number nine. Item number ten, discuss, consider approving, setting the rental fees of voting equipment at five hundred dollars per piece of equipment. And we have our elections person here to kind of explain what this is.
For Texas election, the one twenty three point oh three two, section D. The county can charge a maximum of ten percent of the cost of your equipment when we link it to local entities. That average for that will be five hundred and forty eight dollars. So we decided we're gonna give in five hundred dollars per piece of equipment to run out to your local cities and schools.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve setting the rental fees of voting equipment at five hundred dollars per piece of equipment?
Show moves.
Motion is made. And second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, this is up. Does this include how do we bill for the programming when we have to program form and such stuff?
No, this is equipment. They're charged a separate charge for the actual programming and setup setup fee.
The entities have to pay their own programming. If we do it for them, anytime we sign a contract with these entities, we get to charge a ten percent administrative fee above and beyond the total cost.
Let's see. So we're not charging for equipment right now.
Right now, the piece based on our old equipment is two hundred and fifty dollars a piece.
I just wanna make sure. I've got a bill from the election in Wells Point of last year, and there wasn't any. There wasn't anything for equipment. There was a charge for ballots and and programming and administration fees, and but there was nothing for equipment. So that's why I was just curious how. I was just making sure we were covering getting reimbursed for everything or as much as we can from these other taxing entities. Thank you. That's all.
All right, any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All is opposed like sign. All right, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider, improve the contract between Vansant County Clerk and Canton ISD for the rental of voting equipment for the upcoming November seventh Canton ISD bond collection. So you just wanna give us an overview of what that contract is?
Basically, the contract says that we will take care of the polling locations because they have certain things for us. In that they will pay for the equipment.
Okay.
And they can give their own, secure their own ballots, programming these and such. They will be renting ten whole sets from us with the exception of the ballot of the man framers. They're gonna order their own favorite ballots through our, and they'll be responsible for taking their own. Which is basically they're gonna rent you the equipment, and you can be in the same voting locations that we're at.
So they won't, then they won't be voting with at the same time in the constitutional election. They will. It will be on the same ballot.
It is. It's not on the same ballot. They are holding their own election. But because it's a November election, they have to be in the same polling locations that we're at on the election day. They can't just choose their own.
Okay. So a voter in the Canton ISD then will have to get two ballots.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
I'll have to sign it twice. I'll have to get two different ballots.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to accept the rental contract between Vansant County and the Canton ISD?
One motion.
Is there a second?
Second person.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and approve the contract with Easton Storage for temporary storage of equipment. This is a twenty by twenty storage that we rented to store our old voting equipment in until it could be properly disposed of. Uh, old voting equipment in until it could be properly disposed of. Uh, it's two hundred and twenty five dollars per month. It's a month-to-month contract. Uh, is there a motion to accept?
Go move.
Is there a second?
I, I got a question. Uh, how long with now and?
It's month to month.
I mean, out of the timeline, we can get rid of.
Well, we gotta figure out how to get rid of the equipment, if it's going to go to another entity or if it's going to go to a, uh, place that will securely destroy it. So, and, uh, at the current time, it'll, it'll probably be at least. Uh, at least after November election, because I don't know that we can, uh, get it done that quick, but we'll try. So the motion was made, uh, was made by, uh, Virgil?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? All right, motion is made. Second, any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Once again, this, this voting stuff has been done all totally backwards. If you need a contract signed and it has to come to this court to approve it. Then why in the world are the voting machines already in storage? You, you. I'm not necessarily against the storage building, but I'm against the process. When is this court going to start conducting business the way it's supposed to be? We, this should have come to this court for a discussion. You discuss it, discuss it, you decide that that's okay. You get your contract and you authorize the signature. You don't do it all backwards. You don't go buy voting equipment and then come to the court and say, I want to approve this bill. And then come back to the court and say, oh, by the way, I need to sign this contract. You should discuss, contract, in both. That's the way this court's supposed to work and as Van Zant County officials, we have got to start running this place like it's supposed to be run.
Okay.
We, we are fixing, we're, we're talking, we're discussing that we've got to rent a, a facility to install these radios if we go with the radio system. Where there's the two buildings that we're looking at, there's room in those buildings for this, this voting equipment. We could, we've got a building out here that is. That is more than adequate for this, that, that we're leasing for six hundred dollars a month. And now we're paying two hundred and twenty five dollars a month. We're giving, we're giving our stuff away and then turn around and paying more money for other places. We've got to start running business like we should. Thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, we don't, we don't have, uh, com- com- this is an open forum that you can ask questions on, I'm sorry. Uh, let me, let me explain something. Uh, we just, uh. At the last commissioner court meeting, I believe it was, we actually approved the contract for heart. And we were not aware that the shipment of the equipment would be coming this soon to get a, uh, storage facility. Uh, or to, to, uh. Get a contract on the agenda for the August thirtieth. Uh, uh, commissioner court meeting, therefore, that is why it's coming up now. And we needed to move it because there's a truck out there unloading equipment. Uh, the new heart equipment today. And that's why it was moved yesterday. To make room for the new, it's going to be today. I'm sorry that we couldn't get this organized sooner, but that was the situation. We just.
That's nonsense.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm gonna have to ask you to refrain from speaking, or I'm gonna have, though you'll have to leave the room. Okay. So, is there any further discussion?
Once again, I want to make sure this, no, I'm not against the storage building. I'm against the process that we're going through. And there's processes that we can have special sessions, uh, with, with. The right amount of time that we can do things the way we should do. Thank you.
So, if your suggestion, we should have conducted a special session to approve this, uh. This contract.
That's exactly what you're supposed to do. If you have to have a special session to approve it, then, then you call a special session.
Very good. Any further discussion? Motion has been made. Is there, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. All right, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, consider, approve changing the permanent polling location for precinct one D. From Randall Hall to First Baptist Church of Fruitvale, located at one eighty one Van Zant County Road nineteen ten. Fruitvale, Texas, and approving an agreement with the church. The fee for the rental will be three hundred and fifty dollars for a non-member of First Baptist Church. With a return of a hundred dollars if no damages. Ma'am, we don't have question and answer during this, this meeting. The only time the public is allowed to speak is during public comments. Thank you very much. Shannon, would you, would you, uh. Kind of give us an update of why we're having to change the polling location?
The polling location that we currently have at Randall Hall, uh, is a metal building. We cannot communicate with our workers. On that day and they can't get a hold of us if they have issues. So we're trying to get it moved to a. Safer, more secure location. And wonder where we can actually communicate with them. Uh, in another reelection, they had multiple. Uh, issues where they needed to get a hold of us and they're good.
Okay.
So it's, it's more of a safety and security.
So, basically, there's no cell signal available inside the building is what you're saying. Okay. All right, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss and approve resigning the resolution for the ballistic shield grant to fund the constable of precinct number four project. Uh, current twenty twenty two, twenty three updated grant resolution which reflects the change in authorized official. This is, uh, merely a, a resolution that will be signed by me as the new county judge that, and they require that before we can get. Paid for this grant. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
Uh, all right, is there a second? Motion by Brendan Barton. Is there a second?
I'll say it. No one discusses.
Okay, motion made, second and discussion.
The, uh. Who, who, uh. Who, uh, filed, filed for this thing?
Bob Kilt.
Is Bob gonna follow through with it, uh, to the very end, or is it in the? What's your status of this?
I believe we've already received the equipment, uh. Right, once this resolution is, is sent, then we will have met the requirements.
That will be it.
Yes, okay, that'll be done.
There, there's currently a resolution there?
Yes, it is. Yeah, it was, it was signed by Judge Patrick.
And the, uh, authorized official listed on the grant chain, we want to get a ring sent in, a new resolution.
All right.
Thank you both.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. All right, item number fifteen, discuss and consider the Savins Grant. Contract to be signed by the county judge to help maintain statewide system. That will provide relevant offender release information notifications of court settings. Or advanced, this is a standard contract that we redo, uh. Grant contracts, I believe it's eighteen thousand dollars that, that, uh. You know, Savins contract is eighteen thousand dollars that we get for this. So, is there a motion to, uh, approve the, uh. Grant contract?
Go move.
Is there a second? All right, motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss acceptance of a check from the city of Edgewood in the amount of. Eleven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents for payment of, uh, southeast front street in precinct one. Commissioner.
Yes, gentlemen, I put this on here. I have a standing near local agreement with the city of Edgewood. And we've done some work on southeast front street, and this is the amount that we've billed them for that work. I just need approval of the court to accept it. I'll make a motion of that effect.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second person.
All right, motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss, consider, uh, plat approval for the Blair addition located. On Farm to Market seven fifty one in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is, uh, here you go. This is kind of a sad situation on everything that the players had to do, but they, the players have. A hundred plus acres and they're, uh, they're giving two acres, uh, to a, uh. A la- a lady that works for them, worked for them for a long time, and so. But you have to, doesn't matter, you have to jump through all these hoops. So they've done everything that they need to according to our subdivision guidelines. And, um, I make a motion that we accept this, uh, plat for filing purposes.
All right, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, it, it is kind of a sad situation, but. Better not a subdivision, but the key is they're dividing land. That's, that's what the.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. And, and it's, it's sad because of, through, through history, through time. Uh, the, uh. We'll call them the bad players, the people that don't do things like they should. Is what requires us, Mr. Melton, to have these subdivision guidelines. And, so, and it, and it. More or less penalizes the people that wants to, that, that do things right, but you have to do that to, to keep everything the way it should be done. It's a. It's what we have to do, and all we can do is apologize for it, but we have to.
To follow the ball.
Follow the law.
All right, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eighteen, discuss, consider approval of three six-month lease agreements. Concerning belly dump trailers for Braz's trailers for precinct one.
Yes, gentlemen, this, this is the lease I have on the trailers. Of course, we use the trailers. I have three CDL drivers and three trucks and. We haul Wood County asphalt for patching, we haul the roll that we make ourselves, put on roads, we haul rock and we build bases. And it saves us the money from paying someone else to haul it for us. And. Brad's trailer gives us a real good deal on the trailer, so I, I make a motion with renew the lease.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion is made in a second. Any further discussion? This is kind of regular, right? So you're using two, correct? All right. Uh, any other more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number nineteen, discuss and approve the annual declaration to follow the rules and procedures to comply with the indigent. Healthcare and Treatment Act. And we have with us today Casey Harden, our indigent health coordinator who handles all of this, so. Can you just give us a summary of what this means, what this does?
Fully, um, we have to present this to the board, uh, as an agreement. And we will follow the regulations for the state. It, it's the indigent healthcare. Through the act and we help people in the community that need medical help. And there's certain procedures that they have to go. And I just need approval. Uh, we do this annually.
Okay, we are required by law to offer this service to the, uh. To the, uh, citizens of this county, and it is not paid for by the state. It comes out of our own budget money. So is there a motion to accept this, uh, declaration?
Show me a person.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty, discuss and consider approving the feeding Texas. Uh, Texans Feeding Texans, which is a meal. Meals on Wheels Ministry, uh, home delivered meal grant program matching thirty nine, uh. Three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars for October first, twenty twenty three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, this is a program that we participate in and, uh, we need to sign a resolution, uh, to continue. In that. So is there a motion? All right, there's a motion by, uh, Commissioner Melton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Uh, motion is made in the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty one, discuss, consider approval of a bond for Nicole Nix, Van Zant County Assistant Auditor in the amount of five thousand dollars. Uh, is there a motion to approve the bonds?
Show me a person.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second, and, uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item twenty two, discuss, consider approval of the county judge to sign the engagement letter with, uh. Patillo Brown and Hill LLP for the annual financial report for fiscal year ending September. Thirtieth, twenty twenty three. This is our auditor, our annual audit, uh, engagement letter. Uh, is there a motion to accept it?
Go move Milton.
Is there a second?
Second person.
All right, motion is made in second. Discussion? Any questions about it? All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. All right, we will now move into a closed executive session in compliance with section, it is, the time is. Nine thirty three. Uh, the closed executive session is. Uh, in compliance with section five five one oh seven two, the Texas government comes to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, and value of real property.